Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Velazquez, will you help us with the pledge of allegiance?
Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, in the name of our liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Velazquez. Section three, approval of minutes of the public meeting December 7th, 2018, special board meeting December 7th, 2018, and regular board meeting December 19th, 2008.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve public meeting December 7th, special board meeting December 7th, and regular board meeting December 19th as presented in our agenda.
There's a motion by Mr. Velazquez, or a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Lopez. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Three in favor and three abstain. Motion passes. Section four, public forum. Do we have anybody for public forum? Okay. Section five, information and proposals from superintendent and staff. Item number one, school board member recognition month, January 2019. The theme is planting seeds of success, reading the proclamation and presentation by RGCC students.
Good evening, Board President, Board members, Mr. Ruel Gonzalez, and attending audience. In Texas, more than 5.3 million students rely on public schools to help students prepare for the future. We count on the adults in this state to ensure that schools are available, qualified teachers are in place, buildings are safe, and resources are provided.
Fortunately, in every community, we have great examples of adults who have already stepped up to make sure that local schools are ready for the enduring minds of today's students. In every community in Texas, board members have taken on the responsibility and the hard work of making our schools the best they can be. School board members bring a variety of skills and backgrounds to their task, and they take their responsibilities seriously. The whole community benefits from the vigilance in providing good schools.
Each January, we pause in our regular activities to say thank you to our school board members. We appreciate their generous sharing of time and energy. Please join us in celebrating School Board Recognition Month by expressing support and gratitude to them for planting seeds of success to all students of RGCC ISD. At this time, we will have the reading of the proclamation.
Whereas, the mission of the public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children, and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world. Whereas, local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners, and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child.
Whereas, local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And whereas, local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system, and whereas, local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectation to the district.
Now, therefore, we, students from RGCC ISD, do hereby declare our appreciation to the members of the Rio Grande City CISD School Board and proclaim the month of January 2019 School Board Recognition Month. We urge all citizens to join us in recognizing the dedication and hard work of our local school board members, and in working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children. On behalf of the Rio Grande City CISD, our interim Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Ruel Gonzalez, will present each school board member with a certificate of appreciation which reads, "For dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the children of this community, please come forward when your name is called." Mr. Eduardo Ramirez. Mrs. Letizia O. Lopez. Mr. Basilio D. Villarreal. Dr. Daria Babinho. Mr. Noe Castillo. Mr. Daniel J. Garcia. Mr. Eliezar Velazquez Jr. Eduardo Ramirez, Letizia O. Lopez, Basilio D. Villarreal, Noe Castillo, Dr. Daria Babinho, Daniel J. Garcia, and Eliezar Velazquez. We thank you for planting and nourishing seeds of success with your actions, words, care, dedication, and love. Because of your deeds, you are sowing great seeds. You have helped harvest the greatest, most abundant crop you can ever produce. Positive, successful, productive members of the human world. Thank you.
We have a story about a tree. It is called, "We Planted a Tree." The story is all about the wonders performed by a tree. Shade, cleaning the air, providing fruit, feeding and sheltering animals, and above all, making the world a better place.
"We Planted a Tree" by Diane Woodrow. "We planted a tree, and it grew up. We planted a tree, and it grew up while it reached for the sky and the sun. The sunshine went into the leaves and brought food to the trees, and the tree grew up. Fat little buds appeared on the branches. The sunshine went into the buds, and soon they burst open. Everywhere it was pink, and we were dizzy with springtime.
The sun kept shining. The pink blossoms dropped off, but soon there were green leaves, green, green, shiny leaves, which had food inside for the tree. Green, green, shiny leaves, which cooled us, which kept the earth cool.
We planted a tree, and it grew up and gave us a shady place. The tree's leaves helped clean the air, and we breathe better.
The tree fed us apples and oranges and lemons and sap for our syrup. We planted a tree, and it grew up.
The tree kept the soil from blowing away. Now rainwater could stain the earth. The soil became healthier because the tree was there, so we planted.
We planted butternut squash and beans, corn, and onions, and cabbage. In the healthy soil, the rich, dark dirt, we could grow our own food, and we ate better.
We planted a tree, and it grew up, and it dropped acorns that fed the squirrels in the winter, and birds came and other animals came too to live with a tree.
We planted a tree, and that one tree made the world better. We planted a tree, and that one tree helped heal the earth.
We planted a tree, and it grew up, and so did we.
As trees perform wonders, so do our school board members. They tackle serious issues and deal with tough financial challenges to provide excellent educational experiences for all children. With that being said, we have planted a tree in your honor. Each tree represents your deep, deep-rooted commitment to our district. Board members, may your trees flourish and grow. May they become as majestic, strong, and grand as you are to this district. Mr. Eduardo Ramirez, your tree was planted at Ringo Merus School.
Ms. Letizia O. Lopez, your tree was planted at Gruya Elementary.
Mr. Basilio D. Villarreal, your tree was planted at Roque Guerra Junior Elementary, formerly known as Wes Grammar.
Dr. Daria Babinho, your tree was planted at La Union Elementary.
Mr. Noe Castillo, your tree was planted at Gruya Middle School.
Mr. Daniel J. Garcia, your tree was planted at Ringo Elementary.
Mr. Eliezar Velazquez, your tree was planted at Rio Grande City High School. Thank you to each and one of you for your service to our district.
The Gruya Middle School Ace Ceramic Class, taught by Christina Peña, will present handmade ceramic pots to our board members.
The Gruya Middle School Ace Culinary Arts Class, under the direction of Aracelita Adena and Sandra Inojosa, will provide board members with delicious cheesecakes and other pastries.
Beautiful gardening wheelbarrows were created by the Gruya Middle School Ace Building Trades Class, under the direction of Ruel Garcia.
The Gruya High School Ace Cojunto will now serenade the school board members and audience.
That's right, great timing. We could always use some flowers. Good job. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Over there, I think we got ours. Right there. Yeah, there, 1 through 34. Right there.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right.
Now, we will have refreshments in the back for everyone to enjoy.
All right, it's 7:20, and we're back on the record now. I know it's hard to get back to business after a presentation like that, but that's exactly why we do what we do, and you really outdid yourself. Thank you for everything that was done tonight. It reminds us why it is what we do. And you all made Mrs. Lopez cry, so that was very... So you can see how emotional, sentimental it is for us. So from the bottom of our hearts, thank you so much. I'm not sure if anybody else wants to say a few words. All right. Okay, we went on to item two. Announcement of Board Members' Training Required by TASB Policy, BBD Legal. Board Members' Training and Orientation. Let the minutes reflect that I've been provided documentation that shows that each member... Each board member has met or exceeded the continuing education requirements. Item number three, consider to take possible action on dissolving of Board Members' Standing Committees.
Mr. President, I move that we accept item three as presented.
Do we have any discussion on item three?
I'll second.
Sorry?
I didn't hear a second.
There's a second.
I just wanted to briefly say with this, you know, I think the standing committees were very useful for us as board members, and it's a way that we got informed. I'll just give a brief example as how, you know, these committees worked. I know Ms. Lopez was head of the curriculum committee, you know, and when we would have items in curriculum, most of the time, you know, we'd just look at her and she'd give us a nod that she had gone through, had gone through the committee, and if she had approved it. And, you know, it's basically a way, a tool for us as board members to be informed. And, for example, this board agenda, I received it, I believe, this Friday. It was delivered to my house. I was not there. I was out of town this weekend, so basically I just had a day to review this agenda. I know the superintendent did make himself available to me to discuss some of these items, but, you know, it's... I don't want to be a burden to the district, you know, and Mr. Gonzalez's time. I know he's spread out thin already as it is throughout the district, and I think these committees were a benefit to us as board members to make informed decisions regarding anything having to do with the district.
I would like to say that most boards nationally have committees. There's so much information that goes on in this district that it's kind of hard to discuss it all in a two- or three-hour board meeting. One of the things I enjoyed about the committees that I was on, I was on finance, insurance, one, it gave me the opportunity to meet with the superintendent, who was very busy, but he always made himself available. I was also... I was also able to meet with the administrative staff and anyone else who had any concerns. And I was able to review the information before it got here. And it's very hard for me as your elected official to vote on something that I haven't had time to review. As it stands, this agenda was delivered to us on Saturday. This meeting is on Monday. The agenda came out at 6:30 and so on Friday. So after business hours, who could I contact if I had questions? Everyone was already off and the meeting is today. So a lot of the things that you have concerns about, you're able to vet them in community meetings. Make sure we have the correct legal wording on things and we're able to answer questions and bounce things off each other before we come and commit things to you. We want to make sure that when we present stuff in front of the district, that it's stuff that we properly have vetted and we know is appropriate information for you to hear.
At the last meeting, I explained the two schools of thought on this. One of them is, we have a bunch of committee meetings with someone much smarter, more private, and a lot of discussion goes on there. And we come out here at the public board meeting and there's not, there's seldom, if any, very little discussion. And it's just voted on and the public doesn't even know what's going on. The other way is, you have committee as a whole here, out in the open, transparent. They can, we all got the agenda around the same time. We're all here and that's why you all are here. Because you can answer any questions we might have tonight in front of everybody. That's complete transparency. And I've read that it's actually frowned upon by the TA, the other agency. So it's just different schools of thought. And I know there's been a motion and a second.
Wait, question, Mr. President. Is there a reason we can't have both? Is there not a reason why we can have committees where this stuff is discussed and transparency in our meetings?
Mr. President, we have a motion and my discussion is real simple, but you just said transparency is of the utmost importance. Everything can be discussed in a board meeting. We have to stay here next five hours, two or three. So be it. But I think transparency and discussing everything where everybody gets an idea of what's going on. And maybe, Mr. Gonzalez, next time, we can produce the agenda a little sooner and, and put it out a little sooner. But I, I agree with Mr. Ramirez.
We have motion by Mr. Varela and a second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, signify by raising your left. Four in favor, three against, the motion passes. Item number four. Consider and take possible action on termination of food pantry activities.
I move that we accept item four as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Castillo, is there any discussion on item four?
Briefly, I wanted to say that, you know, I think if, I'm not sure. I think Mr. Ramirez has attended one of these pantries. I know the other board members probably have not. I think, you know, before making a decision, I think it'd be appropriate for you all to get yourselves informed and attend one. If you have attended several, they, 90% of the people that are going to these pantries are employees or parents of our students. And, you know, as us as public servants, in my opinion, I think this is a great public service, what we give back to the, the community. And I think, you know, from my understanding was, one of the issues was that there was no memorandum of understanding. And I, and I think, you know, like I told Mr. Gonzalez, you know, I think this is an issue that, you know, is not, I guess, ripe, you know, for the fact that there's no action that has been taken. So we're actually taking action to terminate something that has not occurred.
Mr. What do you think?
The, excuse me, the information that was, excuse me. The information that's provided me by administration, it appears that the last time there was any action on this thing was, I believe, for the 2015-2016 school year. And that was the, the motion that was made for the food pantry. But there's been no official action since that time in regards to the food pantry, at least that, that I've been made aware of. As a result, the, the issue here really is, what, what is the, either the, the message that you're sending in regards to the community and regards to what your principal role is, which is the education, education of your children? I'm assuming that there are people, individuals and organizations that are going to pick up the food pantry because it's a very important item. Just because you're not sponsoring doesn't mean that it's not, it's not going to be in existence.
I believe there is a food pantry in every, I know Rio Grande City has a food pantry. I know that Alvarez Road or Mr. Alvarez has a food pantry. I know the east side. And right now, there are food pantries. Our biggest task is to educate kids. And I'm sure that the other food pantries would take up the spec. Our total, what is it, focus should be on trying to educate kids and that's my comment.
I think there's a lot of liability issues that have to be taken into account too. I'm not even sure who really owns it at this point or who's doing what there. So that there's a lot of open ended questions.
The information that I've received to date does not indicate who really is either owns it or the principal sponsor. I've seen information that United Way, the school district. But, but the end result is that there's really been no formal action by this board, except for that one meeting, 2015-2016. So as a result, it's been operating without any authority during this period of time.
And so you're saying that we should stop taking care of people. I've never seen any of you in any of the food pantries and I've attended many of them. And the majority of the people who go are our district's employees. And I know sometimes people who have a lot, they forget about those that don't have as much. But yes, there are a lot of food pantries, but over 150 families come monthly to ours because they need our assistance. And they are parents of the children in our district. And I understand that there's been some administrative shortfall or shortcoming that has let it fall in some kind of disrepair as far as it is academically, that we're supposed to do these things. But, so then repair it. You don't just throw people out in the cold because it's too much trouble to sign another memorandum of understanding? Is that what you're saying? It's too much trouble to take care of people in need? It's too much trouble to take care of your district employees? Ms. Lily Peña is here. Can you come to the podium, please, Ms. Peña? Ms. Peña is actually the director of the Child Wellness Network, the organization that currently is providing the full funding for the Rio Grande City CIST food pantry. Thank you, Ms. Peña.
Good evening. My name is Lilia Peña. I am the director of the Child Wellness and I am here this evening to inform. It is with heavily heart that the Child Wellness Network announces that it will no longer partner with the Rio Grande City CIST to fund its food pantry. It has become disappointingly clear that the acting superintendent and the certain members of the school board trustees no longer share our deep concerns about the well-being of the community that we serve. When we were first told that the Rio Grande City CIST food pantry had lost both sources of funding from the district attorney's office and United Way and therefore would have to close its doors, we immediately elected to sign on a fully sponsor this wonderful program. As volunteer, we have witnessed the hundreds of families, district employees, parents and children that this pantry has served. But thankfully, now as sole participants, we are happy to introduce the newly formed Carrying Hearts Food Pantry. We are proud to continue the idea of caring for one another through the act of giving from our hearts. The new Carrying Hearts Food Pantry will dispense food bags to needy families on the last Thursdays of every month. We are also interested in expanding our services to other needy communities. We are asking that if anyone knows of any community, community that would benefit from our services, that you please call 956-263-1387 and let us know how we may be of service. We invite you to join us January the 24th, where the first 100 families will receive free steaks proudly sponsored by our partnership, the Pediatric Care Center. The food pantry will continue.
Thank you, Ms. Peña.
Any further discussion? We had a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Varela, a second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, signify by raising your left. Four in favor, three against, motion passes. Item number five. Consider and take possible action on termination of Paycheck Works employee purchasing program.
Mr. President, I move that we accept item five as presented on our board agenda.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, is there any discussion?
Why?
Good evening. We received a letter from David White and he's in charge of the Paycheck Works program. And it reads, "To members of the boards, of the board and citizens of Rio Grande, I was informed late Friday night that my employee purchasing program for your school district is in the agenda to be terminated and no longer offered. Since we launched the program in late November, which just barely gave us a chance to let employees know about us, we have had 70 employees sign up for usage and about 20 already purchased merchandise. Our program is widely used across our country to help employees. Whether it is assisting them in a financially stressful situation, helps them budget or simply allows them to improve the quality of their lives, our program helps. Having been in the industry for 30 years, I not only understand how much our program helps, but also how the growth of the program works within our, within your employee population. If properly communicated, we will see 15% to 20% of your population using our program year after year. I would love to have them being able to attend this meeting to discuss in more detail why you should keep this free, no cost benefit for the school district in place. Could you please at least table this matter until the next board meeting to allow me time to attend it and give you more details on all the great benefits to the school district and its employees? I hope to hear back with news that I will have a chance to speak at your next board meeting." David White.
So Ms. Robles, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
What if, let's say, some furniture companies, let's say Lax, let's say LFD, they want to sell the school also? And they're willing to go out there the same way, no credit check, no, basically, in other words, is, is what we're doing open to all the businesses anywhere?
No, it should not be open to everybody unless there, there's an agreement with the board of trustees.
If they're willing to provide, say, six months of, of employment and the same qualifications you have, don't you think we're opening up ourselves to, let's say, LFD? LFD wants to sell furniture at no interest, six months. Lax, you know, different businesses, you know. Attorneys, hey, by the way, you know, we're not going to charge any interest. You can have $3,000 of attorney's fees and just take it out of your check. I'm just saying, we're opening up ourselves to other people wanting to do the same thing or trying to sell to our schools. It could be furniture companies, it could be tire companies, it could be attorneys. I'm just saying, it's, we're in the business, I guess, of educating kids. And, and don't get me wrong, maybe this is a good program. But I think what we need to do is, we need to protect ourselves because if another company comes and says, "I'll do everything this company does, I want to sell to the school", how can we say no?
Excuse me, Ms. Robles. Uh, excuse me, Mr. Secretary, obviously you haven't read the contract. You don't need to protect a school because we're not liable. The contract states that they are entitled to all collections related to anything purchased by our workers. 3% to 4% of their salaries is the stipend that is given for everyone. Everyone is given a certain set of income that is not supposed to be overwhelming and they are collected directly from the paycheck. This company works with the whole state of South Carolina and all of Southwest Airlines. So it's not a small individual company. They have vetted out this whole procedure. But more importantly, when do we start deciding for our staff, our employees, what they can and cannot do with their own money?
I, I think that when we become a business of selling stuff in school, that's a problem. I don't, I don't see that that should be here. It's the education. It's not buying and selling stuff. We're using school resources to, to pay somebody's bills and that, I, I have a problem with that.
Mr. Castillo, have you ever had an emergency? Your refrigerator broke down or your washing dryer broke down? And maybe it's after Christmas and you don't have any money because you didn't get your full reimbursement from the school district? And so now you need to figure out how to take care of, of taking care of your family? This is a no fee service that a lot of people can utilize to help supplement their bills. And it's not our job to tell our employees how to spend their money.
I made a motion.
I made a motion, second. Let me ask you one question, the Robles. And all employees, most of them belong to the credit union? The credit union you think?
Yes, they should have an appropriate.
Can you, can you go get what they call a, a, where you, when you go and say, "I want a loan for one month of my paycheck", can most of them qualify for that?
Yes, there are loans available for it.
Well, that's it, I call for a vote.
Ms. Robles, what's the interest rate on those loans?
I'm not sure about that.
Uh, but can we all say that most often those types of loans are at 25% upwards, where this is interest-free financing?
We're discussing something that has nothing to do with the school district and education and the employees and the staff and the people. You know, again, I have a problem with that in itself.
The second you stop taking away people's choices to spend their money.
I'm not taking away anything. Just trying to do the right thing.
Well, we're not going to feed needy people and we're not going to let you spend your money. Thank you, Ms. Robles.
I believe we've had sufficient discussion. There's a, most of them, Mr. Varela, and a second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, so signify by raising your left. Four in favor, three against, item five passes. Item six. Consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from Christopher Wilson Big River Wrestling Club for Wrestling, Rio High School Gym.
Attached is a request from Christopher Wilson for the use of the gymnasium at Rio High School. He has the Big River Wrestling Club, grade eight and below, that fit into the RGC High School Wrestling Club. The club is for the youth from our area to expand the growth of wrestling in Rio. Liability insurance has been provided. Practices will be held Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays from 5:00 to 6:30 PM, provided that there is no conflict with other activities.
Is there any discussion on item six?
I, I move that we approve item six as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Lopez. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item seven. Consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from City of Rio Grande City 2019 Youth Basketball League, Rio High School Gym.
I move we approve item seven as presented in our board agenda.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on item seven? A motion by Mr. Varela, second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eight. Consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Center to host the 2019 Starr County Fair Pageant, RGC CIST Auditorium.
I move we approve item eight as presented in our board agenda.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Varela, second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item nine. Consider and take possible action on request from the U.S. Customs and Border Protection, Department of Homeland Security for right of entry for survey and site assessment.
The U.S. Department of Justice is requesting permission to enter upon the district's land in accordance with the attached right of entry for survey and site assessment for the purpose of conducting environmental assessments, property surveys, appraisals and related work which may be necessary for possible acquisition in support of U.S. Customs and Border Protection's construction of border infrastructure projects such as border walls, lighting and roads. This right of entry is irrevocable for 18 months.
First and foremost, are they going to build a wall next to Fort Ringel, do you know?
I'm not sure, sir. On the attachment, there was a map attached as to what, exactly what land or what part of our land will be used or assessed for the construction of the wall.
Ruben, if we say no, they still say yes, correct?
It's up to the board to make its decision and let its will known to, to the government. And you can say no, they may eventually come back and force us to, to agree to it. They, they have a kind of sovereign immunity and sovereign things. But, but the board can, can make its decision and by making, and by making this decision, let your feelings known to the federal government, however you wish.
Mrs. Menendez, didn't we give them permission sometime ago, is it a different area or just, is it an extension?
I think it's a different area. Because the letter that they sent, it mentioned another cost that we have pending. cost that we have pending, so I'm not sure that's the one you're talking about.
I, I, the previous action that we took, it didn't mention anything about border walls. I think when most of us voted for it, we didn't know we were voting for, for a possible survey for a border wall. It didn't mention anything about border wall, the previous action that we took.
So you, you really can't keep the government out, right?
Well, it's very difficult, but, I mean, the, the request is by the government for you to give them that permission. By not giving it, giving them their permission, they may have to go to federal court to request that from, from the federal court.
Is it going to cost us extra money to defend ourselves?
More than likely, yes, sir.
Well, in that case, I move that we approve item nine as presented.
And it did just say survey and site assessment.
It's just a survey. At this, at this juncture, it's not, it's requesting to survey, but it's telling you what the purpose of the survey is going to be.
So you have, you have the, a sheet, Ms. Robles, that tells us what the scope of the projects are going to be?
Yes, it is attached within the book. They also suggested that if you had questions, we could contact the person that is named there to answer your questions.
And if I could add, we did this before and wound up in federal court. Had to go down there with the attorneys.
I made a motion on item nine to accept that it's presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, do I have a second?
No, he's second.
No, okay. Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed?
Staying.
Three in favor, I mean, four in favor, three against. Motion passes. Item 10, consider and take possible action on donations. I'm sorry, three abstained, four in favor. Motion passes. Item 10, consider and take possible action on the donations to Rio Grande City CSD.
Total monetary donations received by the school district totaled $2,776. The district also received a Christmas tree from Walmart.
Any discussion on item 10?
I move that we approve item 10 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Varela, second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 11, consider and take possible action on pay applications number 12, 13, and 14 for the district-wide energy savings and facility improvement program.
At this time, Mr. President, I move that we table this motion so we can let legal counsel basically review the documentation about this, about this program because as we look at, and I look at numbers, we have ACs at tune, to the tune of 152,000, 101,000 in labor. We have 151,000, 101,000 in labor. We have 260,000 in materials, 179,000 in labor. We have another one of 179 and 116,000 in labor. We have another one of 296 and 100 and, 198 in labor. It just seems that it's a huge contract and I, I'm thinking that before we go out there and approve any more money, I would like legal counsel to go and review the documentation and see, because in labor costs, just for HVAC, we're talking in excess of a million and some dollars in labor.
Yes, sir. Labor totaled $2.4 million, which is approximately 33% of the cost of the project.
So I'm, I'm just saying, and yet we have, and tonight, we're, correct me if I'm wrong, we're bringing, presented some, on one of the things to approve, to go, come and fix the HVAC here in La Grulla High School, which we are going to do. So with that said, I, I move that we do not, we postpone or table this motion and hand it over to our legal counsel to take a look at all the contract.
Okay, there's a motion to, to table or postpone until the next meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
Excuse me, Ms. Robles, hasn't this work been completed?
Yes, it has been completed.
And so what happens if you don't pay for the work that was completed, the, the contract agreed upon?
We do have a representative from E3. I don't know if you all have any questions about the project itself?
Well, it's a pay application of $90,000 to the tune of 7-point-something million dollars. I'm sure that they can wait a month so they can, so a legal counsel can review. I'm just thinking, you said, you said something a little while ago that we spent 2-point, how much in labor?
2.4.
2.4 million dollars. The thing that I look at is that in many places, our HVAC or air conditioners are not working properly and yet in many of the cases here, we spent hundreds, if not millions, of dollars in, in parts and labor to fix the HVACs and yet we have many of the HVACs that are, or air conditioners that are still not working. And I don't see a problem with having legal counsel taking, looking at the contract to see things are what they're supposed to be. I, I just, I have a problem. We don't have air conditioners working. I have a problem with labor to the tune of 2-point-something million dollars. Well, may, basically, if somebody's being charged $180,000 in materials and $125,000 or $130,000 in labor, it just doesn't seem right for HVAC. I mean, I mean, it just doesn't seem right.
Excuse me, sir, you do realize that the, part of this agreement was that anything that we spent, we were going to get back in savings. So all of the money that you're saying that we expended, we've been guaranteed by the company that we would get that back. So that was the investment. That's why this was such a great plan. But yes, it was over 2 million, but we were guaranteed to make that back in savings over the program. And I would love to hear from you, sir. Thank you. Can you please come and let us all know a little bit about your program a little bit more?
Hello, guys. How you doing? My name is Paul Quay. I was the construction project manager for this project.
Good evening, sir.
And we're pretty much, we started back in early February and we continue. We did the lighting for all the, all the elementaries, middle schools, and, and, yeah, middle schools, actually. And, and we did the lighting HVAC and, and also did some controls on, on some special six, six campuses. And we did an energy, energy conservation to make sure we can save you some, save you the money that we said on the contract that we stated. And basically, we, we, we were completed by mid, mid-November and we've just been finalizing, you know, trying, taking care of all the little items, you know, the little details that need to fine-tune here and there. But overall, we've pretty much, pretty much completed the project already.
So you say, sir, that, so you say that you have, that you put controls on a lot of the chillers and HVACs in, in our, in our district?
Only, well, we only had six campuses that, that we got awarded.
Okay, you got six campuses and you say they're working properly right now as we speak?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Garza is in charge of air conditioning. Are the, are the controls working properly, Mr. Garza? So you're having issues with controls? Have you notified this company?
I was not aware that we're having issue, control issues.
Well, let me ask another question, sir.
Sure.
How, how is it that you spend, let's say, $200,000 in, in HVAC and you charge 130,000, 40,000 in labor? I, I, I just, those are...
I don't, as far as the numbers on, in that sense, my, my part was just construction part of it. I can, I can, we, I just got a notice that we had a meeting this afternoon.
So let me ask you a question. In this project, the school district paid $121,000 for the bond. The school district paid $206,000 for the design. The school district paid performance and management setup. What is that? $65,000. What's that about?
Again, I'm, I'm just a construction project manager on the, on the, on the, on the other part of legal and the dollars on it. I'm, I'm not too familiar with that.
Ms. Robles, let me ask you a question. Have you done an analysis of the first three months of how much energy we've saved in comparison to three months prior?
Hey, true, the true actual savings, as recommended by Mr. Bill Sabarino, we will not be seeing the true actual savings until we complete one year after the completion of the project.
So you think that we're going to see $7 million in how long, sir?
Could I ask?
Whatever the contract was, was stated at, whatever the, the performance management stated, how many years it was going to take to get that savings acquired?
So you say we're, I guess the contract was 10 years, 12 years, 10 years, I guess? So you're saying we're going to see $7 million in savings over a 10-year period?
Again, again, we, we need to re-stress on, on the, on the savings on it since there's been quite a few changes on, on the HVAC equipment?
So again, let me just ask real quickly, and that just has me missed. We have here HVAC at $260,000 and at Veterans Middle School and yet we have labor at $175,000. What is the price of a chiller these days?
It all depends on what, what, what we want to put in there because it, it, it's also, it's not just because of the chiller, it all consists of the controls, consists of a lot of mechanical, mechanical equipment that consists to make every, all the, all the goods and parts work properly.
But $174,000 in labor, sir? Just for veterans?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Garza, one last question. Are the controls working or not? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Quay?
Yes.
Did you do any work here in La Grulla High School?
Uh, I don't, I don't understand.
Uh, did, uh, did E3 do any kind of work here in La Grulla High School?
No, La Grulla High School would not do any work here. I think there were omitted, the high schools were omitted from the, from the, from the program, project, the project conservation project. It was omitted from, from this first program.
One final question. The savings that you tell us, if we don't receive them via the, the energy savings, does our contract not say then your company will reimburse us those monies?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Will reimburse, reimburse a little bit.
Thank you, sir.
All right, there's a motion to, to table.
There's a motion, a second.
And a second, Mr. Castillo. Any, for this, no, okay. All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, signify by raising your left. Four in favor, three against, and motion passes. Item 12, consider and take possible action on Starr County appraisal district payment schedule for 2018, 2019.
I move that we approve item 12 as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, any discussion? All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 13, consider and take possible action on budget amendment number 2019-2.
Attached, you will find budget amendment 2019-2 and this amendment is being prepared to revise the current budget. Revision expenditures are presented for your review and approval. They are just basically transfers requested from campuses and departments from one function to another function.
I move that we approve item 13 as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Lopez. Any discussion? All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 14, consider and take possible action on tax refunds for the months of November 2018 and December 2018.
I move that we approve item 14 as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Castillo, any discussion? All in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 15, consider and take possible action on requisitions, $5,000 and over in a 12-month aggregate.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. Ontalas, we do have two pages of requisition for your, your consideration. All of these requisition does have proper funding available for the, for the services or the, or the product being purchased. It's mostly services. I don't know if you have any questions on any, any of these? Couple of questions, though.
Certainly.
I know that they working, they were working on trying to get the air conditioner or the air conditioner here in La Grulla fixed. Have we included everything to fix the air conditioners here at La Grulla High School? Yes, sir. As of, as per Mr. Garza and all parts that we need and, and services, if you, if you noticed, on the second page, the train company, this is a, a annual scheduled service agreement. The company had discussed this with the district a couple of years ago. It, it was never brought up for, for board approval, but these chillers and, and maybe Mr. Garza could help me out with some of the, some of the terminology. But what I understand is the water is very hard in this area, so service has to be provided where they will go in and chill this water, have ice water and there's, not corrosion, but there, there's a buildup where there's little holes where water cannot flow through and if we don't get this serviced, these big units can go out and we won't have any air conditioner for the school. That's for the, that's through the train company. That's an annual service and, and they, they come in and do an annual inspection. They'll also do semi-annual inspections on the centrifugal units and the, and the tubes. They'll, they'll actually come in and brush and they'll do that semi-annually. And annually, they'll do a mechanical draft cooling tower inspection on each of the cells. I believe there's four cells that they have. The price on that is $17,755. There's also the next requisition for the Fox Mechanical. Those are two motors that, that need to be replaced and this is parts and labor and they, the company offers a six-year warranty on parts and labor.
What campus is that? What campus?
For La Grulla High School. For La Grulla High School. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah. Well, yeah, it's a 200, 200 horsepower drive for the motor and also a 15 horsepower drive for the, it's a vertical bypass for the motors. Yeah, thank you for, for your correction. So, Mr. Garza, a couple of questions. If we approve everything tonight here in La Grulla, is, is it going to fix all the problems we have at La Grulla High School? Can I ask, how many chillers do we have here in La Grulla, sir?
Two.
Two, okay. And how many are working here right now?
One.
Okay. And how long has that one been broken for, the one that has not worked? Have we turned in requisitions to try and fix it in the past? And? So you say we, we've had one chiller broken for over three years and we've been working in La Grulla with one chiller for the last three years? And this, and we approve everything tonight, we should, La Grulla, except for the controls you're talking about, should be doing, okay?
Excuse me, sir. What is the total cost for the repairs for La Grulla?
Further repairs?
So everything that you're saying?
Well, there, there are two other requisitions further on up on that, that same page from Train and Fox Mechanical. Train, there was repairs on the chiller on that requisition 301-734 and then from the, Fox Mechanical, other repairs on, on the unit. So it's those two figure, I, I just don't have them, I'm sorry, I don't have them added up at those two figures and the requisition 302-848 and 851. Just adding those up. Well, I'm sorry, the one for the train company, 302-848 is a service agreement. But it'll be the $10,009.63, $19,990, and the $23,470, I don't know, plus the controls that you need to get.
So close to $80,000?
And the company, I'm sorry?
That's close to 75, 80,000, is that about right? When you gave me all that plus the controls. And how old are these units?
When the school was built, I... It's been 10 years?
How long?
10 years.
10 years.
I, again, I know there was a concern to get an agreement. In fact, a gentleman that worked for Train and now he's with Fox, he, he gave us a really good explanation. I know he presented it to the maintenance department, then he had come to my office and I discussed it with administration, but it's, it, it really needs to be done to get these units, you know, up to par. Like I said, he, he said that, that hard water really, really gets to these units. Like I said, he, he said that, that hard water really, really gets to these units, and they need to really clean them out and inspect them and, and do the semi-annual.
I was, I was gonna ask if, I know chillers are supposed to have a life expectancy, like about, what is it, 15, 12 to 15 years? And so that they hadn't been working for three, so means they only worked seven years, half the time? You, you said that they haven't been working for three years, the school's 10 years, 10 years old, so they only worked for seven years, and they're supposed to be working 12 to 15 years?
Well, let me ask you a question, Mr. Garza. You said, when was the last time we did service to them? So we haven't done any service since the year 215. And it's like a car, you need service, correct? You need to change the oil, you need to change different things, tires and whatever it is, for it to keep on working. And if we don't service the, the, the chillers, if we don't service them, I would imagine they, they are going to get problems as we move forward, correct? Mr. President, I move that we accept, uh, item 15 as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Villalder, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 16, consider and take possible action on awarding of the following bid, RFP number 18-08 Pest Control for Districtwide.
Mr. Salinas, on this bid, uh, let me ask, I know there is an individual who is moving from someplace, and he has a pest control certificate, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So do we need this one anymore or not?
I believe we do, sir, due to the food services, if I'm not mistaken. The food services has their own, uh, service due to, uh, weekend services, sir.
Okay. Is that correct, Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Doctor and, uh, Mr. Villal, yeah, there was, uh, discussion about that. Food service, they can't have anyone doing any pest control services while they're preparing food during the week, so their services are provided, uh, they, they like the services provided on weekends, and because of, um, well, we, we discussed before, you know, not having any overtime and all, just, just continue with, with the company. And, uh, and I was gonna say, uh, our original, uh, title of our, um, uh, RFP was Pest Control Districtwide, but, uh, as, as you see in, in the letter, at the very bottom, we're recommending, uh, begone extermination just for the food service department only, for all the cafeterias. None of the school buildings or anything, that will be done by, uh, district personnel.
Mr. Page, real quickly, can we change, like, for example, now they're, they're going only the cafeteria and it says Districtwide, is there a conflict or a, a problem with it?
Well, uh, uh, again, that, that was the title of the original RFP when it went out.
Okay.
And, and at that time, we, um, included all the three companies on a ad needed, as-needed basis, but, um, but we, we just recommending at this time to continue the services with begone extermination for food service only.
There's no problem.
Okay.
I, I make a motion, we accept item 16 with the caveats that Mr. Smidley has just mentioned.
There's a motion by Mr. Villal, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 17, consider and take possible action on TSB Localized Update 111 affecting local policies, PPD Local, CA Local, CJ Local, DHE Local, DHE Exhibit, DI Local, and FBA Local.
Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Schools, Mr. Gonzalez, on item 17, you have the TSB recommended updates to our local policies. These policies are not only recommended by TSB, but also been reviewed by our General Counsel. I don't know if there's any question on any policies?
Are you comfortable with them, sir?
Yes, sir, I am.
I saw a move that we accept item 17 as presented.
There's a, there's a motion by Mr. Villal, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Lopez, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 18, consider and take possible action on TSB Policy EIF Local, Academic Achievement Graduation Exhibit Resolution and Regulation.
With the item 17 that was just passed, there's a legal policy, EIF. In item 18, there's three components to EIF, and this deals with any students that were in grade nine before 2011, 2012 and meet the requirements in EIF legal, can now have a local committee at the district level that can award them a diploma, meeting the specifications on the three components that are attached in this policy. First one being the EIF Local, which is, are gonna be our guidance, our EIF Exhibit, which is a board resolution, which is required by, by policy, and the EIF Regulation was just the rules for the, for the administration to follow. Administration recommends approval, this is a good opportunity for, for our district.
What does this mean, can I ask?
Any student, sir, who was in grade nine?
What does this mean?
Yes, sir, if I'm not mistaken, and I, and I have someone here that can help me with specifically, we, we, we got together before, because I don't know much about this graduation, but basically what, what TSB's saying is, we're allowed to have these students who enrolled in grade nine before 2011, 2012, to be able to be awarded a diploma if they're deficient on any exams. Back then, I believe it was a task, was it?
Tax.
So deficient on the tax, um, they can be awarded a diploma by a local committee, a governing committee at the, at the district level. And there's eight criteria, if you look on the policy, and it's found also in the resolution, it gives you the eight criteria that the district can award these individuals a diploma.
I think it's a great idea, but how do we get to these kids? That, you're saying it's 211, right?
Yes, sir.
Do we, do we just send them and, and to the last mailing address, or? How do we get this out, out of curiosity?
I know in one of the meetings that I attended with Superintendent, sir, someone mentioned a billboard going out there and publicizing in the newspaper. There are several recommendations, Mr. Gonzalez.
We're gonna go, uh, make, make some communication with the parents. We're gonna make lists of the students, and we're gonna communicate with them via schools.
So we're gonna, we're gonna be able to give kids that didn't get a high school diploma, a high school diploma?
As long as they met all the classes requirements, then yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a good opportunity for the kids.
I move that we, uh, accept or, uh, that we accept, uh, item 18, uh, as presented on our board agenda.
There's a motion by Mr. Villal, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Lopez, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 19, consider and take possible action on a request for permission to contract Lewis Educational Concepts LLC Jane Schaefer to provide writing program training for high school teachers, RGC High School, Gruya High School, and early college high school.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, Erwado Ramirez, members of the board, Mr. Gonzalez, interim superintendent, and community members. Our three high schools are requesting to provide staff development utilizing the Jane Schaefer Writing Program. The cost for all three schools is approximately $15,000. But for the record, the funding source, because it's not on your, um, board agenda on the decision-making form, but we have an updated decision-making form, for the record, the funding source is state bilingual, 199, ESL waiver, and staff development, uh, development opportunities. We do recommend approval.
I move that we approve item 19 as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Villal, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Lopez, is there, is any discussion?
It was $15,000, sir?
$15,000 for all three high schools.
I just wanted to ask, you know, I know the previous board meeting, we took down something that cost $10,000, and, and I'm all for staff development, it's always a, a good thing for, uh, teachers. I'm just gonna ask, like, you know, are we gonna have some type of consistency? What's appropriate, what's not appropriate, you know? We have no issues with this one, and I, and I believe that it don't have to do with special ed.
Yes, sir.
And you did tell me that we might have some issues with special ed, and we might get a monitor, and we did actually not approve that one.
Uh, I, I could not hear your questions, I'm sorry.
You had, you had told me that we might have issues with special ed, that we might get a monitor, and we actually did not.
Well, that's if you go to stage four. On this one, Mr. Peña came forward and he met with the other high school principals and they're recommending for three schools.
No, and, and I don't have any issues with that, I'm just, I'm just, I guess this question's more.
On the other one, sir, I had just come in, I, I, I didn't get a chance to see anything that night, I just sat in and just got started. On this one, I was able to meet with the principal, um, and all the people that are gonna be involved in it. And, uh, Mr. Peña really recommended this for the teachers. On the bilingual, the money is earmarked for, uh, staff development.
We're writing.
Uh, in other words, if you don't spend it on staff development, then you have to send it back, am I correct, man?
Yes, sir.
So the money's there for that purpose only, so, uh, really, it's, it's really practically at no cost to the district because the, the state bilingual's paying for it.
Who's paying for the other?
I, I, I do not know, I need to go back and check, sir.
Let me ask you, Ms. Leti, writing is a component of our exams, correct?
Yes, sir. Uh, it's our component for our EOC.
Is it one of the main components?
Yes, sir. It's one of the areas where we, uh, do have the greatest need for English I and English II.
And it's three high schools, correct?
The three high schools, correct.
And how many, how many teachers are gonna be?
We're looking at, uh, 20 teachers that will be trained through the Jane Schaefer Program.
20, uh, 20 teachers for all three high schools, or 20, 20 teachers per high school, or 20?
It's, uh, it's 20 teachers for, uh, the three high schools, and she will be, this includes, uh, materials and a discount, and any accompanying workshops or strategies that, that we'll need in the future for the schools.
Any discussion? There was a motion by Mr. Villal, a second by Mrs. Lopez, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 20, consider and take possible action on 2018, 2019 District Improvement Plan.
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, School Board President, Board Members, Mr. Gonzalez, interim superintendent of schools, ladies and gentlemen. Federal Programs is respectfully requesting the approval of the District Improvement Plan for the 2018, 2019 school year. The District Improvement Plan is comprised of the district's comprehensive needs assessment along with five main goals that target academic excellence, learning environment, quality personnel, fiscal management, and parental involvement. This plan serves as a blueprint of how the district will address the needs of our students as identified in the CNA, which is a comprehensive needs assessment, in each one of the eight ESA require areas of student demographics, student achievement, school culture and climate, staff quality, recruitment and retention, curriculum instruction and assessment, family and community involvement, school context and organization, and technology. The District Improvement Plan is a working document that is constantly changing throughout the school year. This plan is put together by the District Educational Improvement Council, better known as the DEIC Committee, which formally meets four times throughout the year with many additional subcommittee meetings as well. Every campus in our district provides three professional representatives to the DEIC Committee, so they provide input and feedback every time we revise our district's plan to ensure that we provide the best services and interventions to target the students' academic needs to increase their overall performance. We respectfully recommend appro, approval.
Any discussion on item 20?
I move that we approve item 20 as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Villal, do we have a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consider and take possible action on 2018, 2019 Annual Campus Performance Objectives.
Once again, the Federal Programs Department is respectfully requesting the approval of the Annual Campus Performance Objectives for the 2018, 2019 school year. As we continue to make efforts to improve our students' academic performance throughout the school district, it is critical to provide students, teachers, administrators, and staff with written objectives that define our districts and campus goals. The objectives promote the initiatives we have undertaken as a district and within the individual campuses to target the students' academic needs to increase their overall performance. The Annual Campus Performance Objectives that you have before you were presented and were submitted by each campus principal as part of their campus improvement plans, which are also working documents and which are revised consistently as the needs of each campus change throughout the school year. In addition, the Annual Campus Performance Objectives presented are also aligned to our District Improvement Plan to ensure that we meet our district goals of academic excellence, learning environment, quality personnel, fiscal management, and parental involvement. We respectfully recommend approval.
Any discussion or, or a motion on item 21?
I move that we approve item 21 as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Villal, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Lopez, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 22?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 22, consider and take possible action on 2018, 2019 Migrant Fourth Grade Writing Camps.
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Gonzalez, interim superintendent, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Veronica Garcia, migrant program coordinator. We're asking approval for the fourth grade writing camps conducted by the Writing Academy. Our plan is to work with migrant students to enhance and support their success in the start writing exam. Our start writing scores show a need to improve in this area. Therefore, we're taking a positive, positive approach in trying to not only improve, but raise the minimum passing rates. The Writing Academy provides a unique approach to writing through tactile, kinesthetic, and educational games to give the Rio Grande City CISD migrant students and their teachers their best start writing test preparation experience. The students will be exposed and engaged in academic enrichment practices that are comprised of an expository camp, editing camp, revising camp, and an expository workshop. The Writing Academy's success rates are undeniably outstanding, and we wish to bring those accomplishments to our district. We will be servicing approximately 51 migrant fourth grade students. The total cost for the program is $4,750 and will be funded through Title I Part C migrant grant to 12. We do have appropriate funding, we respectfully ask for your approval.
Is there any discussion or a motion on item 22?
I move that we approve item 22 as presented.
There's a motion by Mr. Villal, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Castillo, uh, all in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Castillo. Do we have anything on the Section 6 Reports and Information? Does the campus exist?
Good evening, Board President, Board Members, Mr. Gonzalez, and all attending audience. When I was four years old, my classmates and I started a journey that is about to end our elementary school years. My name is Julian Sarate, fifth grader, and I am proud to showcase our school, Gruya Elementary, a leader in me campus. Good afternoon, my name is Julian Sarate, and today I'm gonna be showing you where I spend about eight hours of my life every day. Welcome to Gruya Elementary. When you come into our school, make sure to sign in with our lovely office staff.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Can I help you, ma'am?
I don't need nothing, I just wanna wish you a nice day.
Oh, how nice, thank you, hope you have a great day too.
You too. Let's start where it all began, pre-kindling. Hi. Say hi. Hi. How can I say? And my first graduation was in kindergarten, let's visit one of the classrooms. Which one is the cylinder? Good afternoon. The cylinder. I want you to circle the cylinder. Are you going to circle number one or number two? This is where you start feeling like a big kid, first grade. Is it 11? Yeah. Hi. Good afternoon. This is where lifelong friendships begin, secondary. Hello? Hello? Hi, good afternoon. Hello, welcome to Miss Cama's class. Thank you. Okay, guys, so one of the predictions that we're doing, he said that Mr. Tanin is, great discoveries happen in his classroom. Yes, I will be in class, so we have three classes. Good afternoon, welcome to Miss County's class, my name is. So it's A. Okay, so then let's go back to A, why do you think that that would be important? What do you think, why? Thank you, have a nice day. And this is where my elementary years end, 5th grade.
Good afternoon, my name is Denali Osuna. We're covering summarizing, reading, leader and me, number three, work first then play. Our goals for this week are me three points for AR, keep classroom clean, 100% perfect attendance for the week and for the six weeks, and stay on task. And we have our classroom crew, all of us have a role. And this is where we keep our data folders. We have important information and data, and we have attendance, our AR, and other important data. And, hope you enjoy your class.
Thank you and have a nice day.
We are the future leaders, that's what they say. But, if we wait for the future, we'll be too late. So we won't wait until tomorrow, our time is now. And with these seven habits, we'll show you how. You gotta be proactive, begin with the end in mind, put first things first. They win-win every time, see first to understand, then to be understood. Synergize with your friends, 'cause it's always better when we work together. Sharpen the saw, be the best knee, so you can see. There's a leader in me, there's a leader in me. I can be myself, I can lead my friends, I can do anything. There's a leader in me, there's a leader in me. The seven habits help me speak, there's a leader in me, there's a leader in me.
Thank you to Mr. Julian Sarate and all those who prepared the video on behalf of Gruya Elementary, thank you. Do we have anything else on reports and information? Item 2, report on quarterly investments.
We started the quarter with the beginning balances as of September 1st, 2018. We started with $26.122945. We acquired a CD of $22,500, and we received interest earnings of $98,274. And so, we have a carrying value at the end of the quarter, November 30th, 2018, of $28,243,819.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Item number 3, report on updates on tax delinquent collection from Limebarger, Gaudin Blair, Sampson, LOP.
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, members of the board, just for the record, Michael Connel, partner with Limebarger Firm, and as you know, we're your delinquent tax attorneys. In the interest of time, I'll be as short as possible, because I know that, I don't think anybody wants to hear about taxes, but I'll tell you that this past fiscal year of 2017-18, we knew we had our work cut out for us because we had a record year the previous year, and this last year of, we knew that it was gonna be harder to admit that what we collected the previous year have not exceeded, but I'm very happy to report that this past fiscal year, we actually exceeded the previous record year, not by a whole lot, but by about $40,000.
So, this past year, we collected just over $2.4 million on behalf of the district, and I'll tell you that we take our jobs not only very seriously, but we try to do our jobs very ethically, and we try to treat your taxpayers in this community like family. And we have found that, that approach works much better, when you treat people like family, we're able to sit down with them and work out some type of payment arrangement on their delinquent taxes. If you look at the last page of our report, which is page 5, and I believe everybody has a report in their packet, what I'd like to call your attention to is the breakdown of the different colors. Basically, the light blue reflects the base tax, the dark blue is the penalty and interest, and you'll see that there was a substantial increase in amount of penalty and interest we collected this last fiscal year. And what that basically means to us tax attorneys is we're collecting older tax years. The older the tax year is delinquent, the higher the penalty and interest is on that particular year. So this is a very good indicator for us, that means we're collecting some of these tax years that have been owed for many, many years. And the other indicator that we look at is at the very bottom of each of those respective bar charts, you'll see what we call the DTR, that's your delinquent tax roll balance. And what that basically means is all the amount of outstanding taxes owed to the district. Now, the district is obviously growing every year, there's more tax bills being sent out as more people move to the Rande, as more businesses move to the area, so your tax bills are going up, but what you wanna see is the amount of taxes owed to the school going down, which is really hard to accomplish in a growing school district, but you'll see that this last year, we actually had a little bit less to collect from. So the fact that the amount of money owed to the district is going down, but yet we're actually collecting more money is a very positive trend for the district. So hopefully it makes sense to you all, I know that for us tax attorneys, you know, we look at all these different factors, but overall, I'm very pleased to tell you that things are going very well for us on the tax side. We continue to work very close with your business office and your tax collector to make sure that we always meet what we did the prior year, if not exceed that, so we can turn that money over to the district and y'all can do what you do best. So, with that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions y'all may have.
Any questions for Mr. Connel?
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your time again.
Thank you.
Item 4, report on tax collections for the months of November 2018 and December 2018. I think he, Mr. Connel kind of got that. He touched the button.
The Tax Office Collections Report for the month of November 2018 is attached for the review, for your review. The report provides you with collections for the current month as well as on a year-to-date basis. In November 2018, we had collections in MNO and INS of $685,632, current, $88,549, delinquent, and $61,614 for penalty and interest. Other collections totaled $29,675 for a grand total collections of $865,470.
Do we have any questions from Mrs. Lopez Mendez? Okay, item 5, report on budget balances for the month of December 2018.
The following fund balances are the audited fund balances that we started the year with. We started with a fund balance of, for the Shallow Nutrition Program, of $2.9 million, and that's how much we have right now. Of course, actual revenues, we have received $3.3 million, expenses of $3.2 million, so we have an excess of revenues over expenses of $47,000.
But, Ms. Lopez, I didn't ask you, Lopez, what's the interest we get paid? Half a percent?
What is the what?
The interest we get paid on, on the money, CDs and things?
It all depends on the...
What's an average?
Maturity.
Half a percent, a percent?
We have some at two, others at less than two, 1.5, 1.75.
So you have some at two?
Yes.
That's good, okay.
For the general fund, we have an audited beginning fund balance of $23,582, and we have received revenues as of December 31st of $41,000.9, and we have expenditures of $41.7, and we do have as of December 31st, an excess of revenues over expenditures of $213,000. For the debt service, we have an audited beginning balance of $2.2 million. We have received revenues of $4.6 million. We have had expenses for the debt service of $1,500, so as of December 31st, we do have excess of revenues over expenditures of $4.6 million.
And that's on what side? The INS?
Yes, this is INS, debt service.
But, all that $4.6 has to go, to go pay INS in the future, correct?
Right.
In other words, that's gonna be a wash, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Item number 6, report on monthly check register for the months of November 2018 and December 2018. Did you cover? I think you covered that, right? Okay. All right, at this point, Section 7, we'll go to closed session on the authority of tax government code, Sections 55.1, 071 to 55.1084, the time is 8:36 PM. Okay, we're back in open session, it's 9:35 PM. Do I have a motion on item May, on discussion on personnel?
I move that we approve item May as presented in executive session.
I have a motion by Mr. Varela, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, raise your right hand. Signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed, signify by raising your left. Same sign, motion carries. We have a motion on item B, discussion on resignations of existing personnel.
I move that we accept item B on resignations of existing personnel as presented in executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item C, discussion on recommendations for employment to vacant positions.
I move that we approve discussion or recommendations for employment of vacant positions as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mrs. Lopez, all in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item D, discussion on recommendation for Rural Grande City High School Athletic Coordinator/Head Football Coach position.
I make a motion on the, I make a motion for the RJCCI School Athletic and Football Coach as recommended to us to be, I guess, Mr., give me the name?
Leo Mireles.
Leo Mireles.
There's a second, there's a second. There's a second, we have a motion by Mr. Varela, there's a motion by Mr. Varela, and a second by Mrs. Lopez, all in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. All opposed?
I'm just gonna abstain, just to be on the safe side, I'm a party to the lawsuit, I'm just gonna abstain.
Well, I have to abstain, I'm a party to the lawsuit too, so it's three in favor, four abstaining, motion passes. Item G, discussion with legal counsel regarding cause number DC-16-557, Anna Maria Varela versus Rural Grande City CISD in the 3D First Judicial District Court, Starr County, Texas.
I move that we accept the recommendation of legal counsel as to item G as presented in executive session regarding item G, the DC-16-557.
We have a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item H, discussion with legal counsel regarding cause number DC-15-631, Rural Grande City CISD versus City of Rio Grande in the 3D First Judicial District Court.
I make a motion to take any necessary action to dismiss the lawsuit on DC-15-631, Rio Grande City CISD versus Rio Grande City.
We have a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, all in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. All opposed?
Abstain.
There's four votes in favor, three in abstention, motion passes, and that's it, that's it, we can, okay.
Motion for adjournment.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second, Mr. Castillo, so adjourned, it's 9:40 PM. Thank you all for those who stayed behind, appreciate the time.
Sir, you take that too, I can't.